Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I'm Melissa Ettermeyer, trustee and mayor pro temp. I will be sharing the meeting this evening in Mayor Tarpeo's absence. We also have Deputy Clerk Lori Charles, who is sitting in with us this evening, and we have attendees by Zoom. Today is Thursday, October 8th, 2020. This is the Village Board meeting for the Village of Willow Springs. The time is 7:01, and this meeting is called to order. Charles, could you please take the roll call?
Trustee Burks?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Needham Meyer?
Here.
Pash?
Here.
Carr? President Carpinio?
That completes the roll. We will move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. If we could, please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no presentations tonight, so our first order of business is disposition of previous minutes. In our board packs, we have the board meeting minutes from our most recent last meeting, September 24th, 2020. We've all had a chance to review them. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Pash.
Motion by trustee Pash, second. A second by trustee Moon.
I would like to make note that under the president's report from the beautification committee of October 1st.
Oh, that's for Oktoberfest. That was just generally. Yeah, that's intentional. That's intentional. Any other discussion on the minute? Any other discussion? Okay, there being none, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Needham Meyer?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Moon? Carr?
And the minutes are approved. We will move on to the reports of officials. First is that of the village president. I will handle that this evening. And all I have is that the beautification fundraiser that trustee Moon mentioned, the Oktoberfest, was this past Saturday, and it was a success. Thank you to everybody that was there to support the event. It's very much appreciated. They raised the money. Also, I wanted to. That was this past Saturday.
I thought it was October 3rd. No?
Yeah, October 3rd.
Yeah, it's October already. Oh, yes, it is.
Moving on from that, trustee Moon would like to invite everybody to a tree planting memorial service to honor his late wife Gloria. That will be held next Saturday, October 17th. Right. At 10:30 a.m. at the Healing Waters Park, is that correct?
Where?
Healing Waters. He's purchased a tree in Gloria's name, and there will be a service to honor her at that time. That is all I have for the president's report. So if we could move on, please, to the village administrator, Brett Woods.
Thank you, Madam President. First item we have. Excuse me while I adjust this so the people on Zoom can see. First item I have is the acceptance approval of a contract for providing the village with road salt with the Morton Salt Company. This is a contract that the county is letting us tag onto. It is, they were the lowest bidder for the county's bid, and generally municipalities jump on with them. Keith, did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
The price increased $9 over last year. It's still a really good number compared to going through car and stuff. They were approximately $95 a ton compared to the $65 this year. So it's definitely a great cost savings, and we've been with them for two, three years now.
Yeah, two, three. So we're saying about $30 a ton.
And then if we need more, we can get it straight back?
Yeah, I mean, that's a basic, well, goes into the unit of contract.
Are we doing the brine again?
Yes. Then price stayed the same at $0.91 a gallon.
And if I could maybe ask, when you speak, the biggest complaint I have about the Zoom attendees is they can't hear you unless you talk into the microphone. So we just ask everybody to speak into the microphone. Then I would be seeking a motion, I guess, for approval of that.
Is there a motion? Motion by trustee Moon? Second by trustee Burks? Any further discussion?
Pash? I'd like to, am I on, Brett? Hello?
Yeah, you can.
Okay, I'd like, Keith, I'd like to ask, Keith, just for my own self here is, this is the same outfit we used last year. Was there a price change per ton? And the second question is, how much did we use last year?
Yeah, Fred, it's the same company as last year. The price per ton went up to approximately $9.
Did you catch that, Fred?
Yes, $9. Yep.
And we purchased 671 tons of salt last year. I believe that I have about 100 tons left in the storage building. So I think we used approximately 570 tons of salt. Last year, we used about, I'm sorry, 6,800 gallons of brine.
Okay. Very good. Thank, thank you, Keith.
I ran a roll of salt and brine this year at about $45.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, trustee Pash. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, there being none, can we take a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Needham Meyer?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Moon? Carr?
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have is a contract renewal with the Rainbow Farms Enterprises. These are the folks that haul away all the leaves that we collect and people put them out on the streets. And this, this isn't, is there any price change in this, Keith?
The price stayed identical.
Okay, this is the same price we paid last year. At about $650 a truck. I believe we, we spent around $10,000 on leaf removal last year.
$650 a truck load semi to dispose of the leaves. And then it was approximately $10,000 in total cost last year to dispose of it.
Okay.
So I guess I'd be looking for a motion for that.
Motion? We have a first by trustee Kennedy and a second by trustee Moon. Discussion? Questions? Okay, if there are none, let's take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Needham Meyer?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Moon?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item I have is, there's, the newsletter is at the printer, and it is actually, I received a text from the printer today. It will be dropped at the post office tomorrow and mailed out to everybody. What you'll find in there, the, probably the biggest thing you'll find in there is the trick-or-treat guidelines that we have used. Basically, we've, we've taken the CDC's guidelines. We've put them out there. That's going to be our guidelines. The hours are going to be two to six. Sometimes we're doing two to six, some are doing three to seven, and there's one town doing four to eight. We thought that because the sunset for, for October 31st this year is going to be 5:45, people are going to be flipping their, their streetlights on. And that would be, you know, and that's one of the signals we're telling people to use if you're participating. And if they're not, they're going to want to turn them on anyway. So we decided to go with 6 o'clock. And we also, inside the newsletter is going to be, you're going to see two signs. There's going to be one that you'll put in your window. People can just take them right out of the newsletter, cut them out. One is a green sign that says, yes, trick or treat, welcome. You'll see this, this is, will be one page. And the other one will be, no trick or treating, sorry. And it's a red one, and that one, people can put up if they're not participating. We've also asked people to consider, if somebody doesn't have a sign at all in their window, that they consider that to be a non-participant in trick or treating. But those, the clerk came up with the idea to put it in the newsletter for people to tear out. That way, we don't have to worry about somebody's, well, where do I get a sign? I don't have a printer at home. Well, now that everybody's going to get one of each sent to their homes. Are there any questions on my report?
No.
Okay. Well, with that, that concludes my report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. On to the report of the village clerk.
No report.
None, no report tonight. Village engineer, Dan Lynch.
Thank you, Madam President. The only thing I'd like to report is that we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for next week. The construction aspect will be in the program this year. So we have arrangements for that if we get started.
Great, thank you. Village attorney, Erica.
Thank you, Madam President. For, the only item for your consideration this evening is a draft ordinance, which has been number 2020-0-25, which amends Title 10 with regard to police regulations. And this addition to the code actually will prohibit the dumping and littering of garbage in the city, or in the village, I'm sorry. Currently, there is no specific code.
Can I interrupt for one second? I apologize. On the agenda, it says this ordinance is 25. The ordinance that's in the packet is 24. That's the actual real number is 24, not 25. I apologize for that.
Not a problem. So it's marked 2020-0-24. Currently, the police department was writing a state code violation for dumping or littering of garbage. This addition will go into your village code and will make your police department issue a citation that goes to adjudications. Certainly much easier than going to the circuit court for something like littering or dumping. So that is before you, for your consideration. Of note, it's the exact same wording from the state. So nothing's been added. It's the state wording, just in the village code.
Very good. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
No move.
Motion by trustee Burks? Second by trustee Moon? Any discussion?
I stated that we have high pay, that people are pumping.
That people littering?
Something new. I need to remember.
Well, this will allow the village to write it under their code now. Any other discussion? Okay, so then let's take a vote, please.
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Needham Meyer? Pash?
Aye.
Carr?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
And that's all I have this evening, Madam President.
Thank you.
You tell me, look at the page and say, hey, you're trying to get the wrong question to charity members.
For the village treasurer, I think we have, I think we have Treasurer Zabinski joining us by Zoom. Did you have a report for us this evening?
No, I don't, Madam President.
Okay, thank you very much. On to reports of standing committees. Building and zoning committee, trustee Carr.
Thank you. The month of September, we issued 42 permits. Total construction value of $552,072 malls. The facility's permit fee is $16,282.75. Add that to what we've done for the rest of the year. We had 293 permits issued. Construction value of $5,436,589 and 40 cents of $165,201.
Very good, thank you. Finance and administration committee, trustee Pash is joining us by Zoom.
I'd like to ask Administrator Woods to read my report, please.
Certainly.
Certainly, trustee. You have before you the payroll and warrants dated October 8th, 2020, with payroll and payroll expenses in the amount of $99,185.47. All fund expenses in the amount of $161,242.05 for total expenditures of $260,427.52.
Is there a motion to approve the warrants, as Red?
Pash.
Motion by trustee Pash, second. By Moon? Discussion? Okay, if there is none, deputy clerk Charles, can we please take a roll call vote?
Trustee Burks?
Aye.
Kennedy?
Aye.
Needham Meyer?
Aye.
Pash?
Aye.
Moon?
Carr?
Okay, motion carries, warrants are approved.
Thanks to Brett, that's all I have for my report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to license and franchise committee, trustee Moon.
Madam President, we have no license and franchise at all issued this month.
Okay. Thanks. We'll move on to municipal building and grounds committee, trustee Kennedy.
Thank you, I have no report, ma'am.
Okay, then we'll move on to public safety committee. That is me. Just wanted to say that this week is fire safety week. Tri-State Fire Chief Sam Mulnar reports that things are running very smoothly. They have all been well-prepared and staying safe during the pandemic. Also, a reminder that October is our police appreciation month here in the village. And I sincerely believe that we have an outstanding department, and there are events planned throughout the month to honor them and show that appreciation. That concludes my report. And Keith, did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam President. I give the board our incident reports for the month from September 1st till today's date, 110 incidents reported on. And we responded to our traffic enforcement initiatives. Have generated 156 traffic and parking violations. The officers came in and took crash reports from September 1st until today. And also, we are supporting the traffic enforcement initiative. There was an additional 50, 50 road traffic stops that were conducted where no citations were issued. And another thing that I have, to our commercial and industrials friends and supporters, they will be contacted like we did last year with, from the National Child Safety Council to sponsor and support our school-related programs of what we do in Pleasantdale, the Willow Springs, Willow Springs School. So they are the only company authorized and with support of us. So no other, no other organization should be soliciting anything from the village residents. So that will be from, what should be going out sometime after December 1st for the National Child Safety.
Very good, thank you.
Hey, I'd like to, is there a report? I'd like to say you're doing a great job with the police force. And then also, if we can just put it out there for October being, recognizing our officers, people don't even put a blue light out on their porch for their support, to support that.
We have to, Jane Pash, for getting your committee together for the adoption, adopt the police department, which you guys have done in just so much support. And one thing is that we're getting everything organized for our Shop at the Cop Christmas program for those who need a little more assistance than we do at Christmas time. We're tentatively scheduled for Saturday, December 12th at the Walmart. So we'll follow up on that the next few days. Thank you.
And we do have that request also in the newsletter that people will display if they like.
Okay, very good. If that concludes public safety committee, we will move on to public works committee, trustee Burks.
Do you have more problems with the backhoe? Or Keith has more information? My sense is something that we've been fully prepared on. Maybe looking into what we can do to maybe get a better one. It seems to be costing us money every few months. Is that correct?
Yes, I mean, the current situation with it is the front drive axle is bad. Matter of fact, oh, it's a 2009 model. It's not that old, it's just had some years of neglect to it. Front axle, just apart, is about $13,000 for a retraction. Transmission itself, I mean, we've had some issues with it in the past year. 9/5 Friday, we had a tow back in for the quick pull-in. It started again, transmission part, I mean, the transmission rebuilt, no labor. It was $20,000 in materials. I mean, just natural repairs, I mean, there's $32,000 to put in this machine. Plus, we priced it about $12,000 in the past year, just trying to get through. I mean, I have been contacting Case, Caterpillar, and John Deere to get pricing for our source ball government pricing. I should have some pricing back, Caterpillar and John Deere the next day or so, and a demo unit for them. So I just try to get a plan ahead for the next meeting. Just so you got an idea, so Case, a brand new machine. When it comes to pricing, there's like $87,000, $88,000 for a call, $87,000. For a brand new machine, they do offer, you know, two, three, five-year lease on it. There's many options as far as we go. But I mean, I definitely want to compare the other two machines. So we have at least three quotes on a good piece of equipment. Those are the top three pieces out there in my opinion. Through Case, we're probably two months out. I'd be lucky to see it by the New Year. And I mean, going into, I mean, our machine should get us enough little salt and just drive across the bridge and do something over here, I wouldn't bring it anymore with the front and stuff that's bad. Caterpillar could probably get us one in a month or less. They have, that dealer, 37 dealers in the air throughout the region. And so they're sitting on a lot that we like, that we respect, they will ship it in. John Deere and we, and we're not Caterpillar and John Deere to get back over the pricing. I know Caterpillar is definitely a higher-priced unit at the start, and our source ball discount is not as much as on a Case machine.
Do we have a place to rent one if we need it? Or borrow?
We can borrow one from the local business. It's just a property that he's out doing a job with it, and we need it. We're kind of stuck. I mean, we did, we definitely did, I mean, to vote, I mean, my biggest concern is loading salt this year.
Yeah, I mean, you can do a solid.
I mean, we could get by with ours for that for now. I mean, this doesn't get by, but I mean, if we have something to do on the second bridge, I wouldn't bring it across the bridge anymore, the front axle, because exactly the, the steering is so worn out and that was just chewed off that it'd be like a tire breaking on the car where the wheel's going to go one way. And it's, it's not going to be a, I wouldn't take it across the bridge anymore. It's sitting down.
Is there any trade-in value on it or?
Actually, Case offered us $24,000 on trade-in.
Really?
On the machine. That's what, I mean, the list price of the machine, I'm sorry, $101,675. Trade it and break it down to the $88,000.
And which is still probably double what it would cost to repair the thing.
Then if we do these repairs, it would be half the price of a brand-new one.
Right.
And so what's that side?
Right.
And that just could be, that could be a yearly expense. So, yeah, I mean, we, we spent a little money on this here, just trying to get it by. We thought it would last for a couple of years. I mean, I discussed a lot of spending and prep on that. We were hoping to get a couple of years out of it. I mean, not a major issue that everybody's going to need to work on. And probably was considering that to replace, you know, fix that up for the use in the machine. But, you know, I'm glad we didn't do it because it's air-based, you probably $4,000 repair. So I mean, it's just, it's just going to keep it passing later. I mean, it's, I just hate to see good money on to bad.
So keep the, with Case, $88,000 is the bottom line.
Would trade it? Yes. Copy this, please, if you want to see the case. But I was waiting for Caterpillar and John Deere to always be get, compare all the machines.
So it sounds like by, probably in time for the next meeting, you'll have prepared those numbers, and we can expect to have some sort of decision to be made by the next meeting.
Yes.
Do we want to wait that long? Do we have a giant wait that long?
You know, once I see the numbers with other company, I mean, Caterpillar would be the machine that I would pick myself, you know, dealing with, talking to other excavators. But I know it's, I just have a feeling it's going to be more than the case. You know, we're, we're not a construction company where we're just eight hours a day. We don't need capital line, let's say. But in the case of a good piece of equipment, I mean, it's, this machine would be, still be in great shape if it didn't have years of nothing shared. You know, when we came in, it was, the whole machine was packed with salt. I mean, you had to break the salt off with a hammer and chisel to get anything to fix it because it was never taken care of.
Can we move this forward so we're not waiting another month? Or can we, can we wait two months?
We have a meeting in two weeks.
Oh, we have a meeting in two weeks?
Two weeks.
Yeah, I only have everything by tomorrow, actually. So the other two, I talked to them today, and they, I was getting some emails, and they did that. They told the numbers, and I gave it to Brent and get emailed out to see if I got an idea what we're looking at. Not bad. Besides that, we get our hot box. We went to train Tuesday all day. My back goes out, training our guys. We will be out tomorrow, starting on Dory, that area, and working our way to the north side of town and over to the south side. Next three weeks, that's what I will be doing every day with the guys. Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. I do not believe there is no old business this evening, no new business. Do we have public comment? I don't think there's any here in the audience.
I'm sorry, I let you see something on the old business. We discussed last month, and one before, we talked about the YMCA and the, you know, the community center. Have we heard any, any positive things on my own?
Yeah, there hasn't been any, any, enough interest from residents to use it. So they haven't held any yet. They're going to let us know month by month whether they're going to be using. Yeah, the, the school district will let us know month by month whether they're going to use it. But so far, they haven't had any.
Okay. And I think then the groups that potentially would have been signed up to use it have been contacted, right, to know that the space is available. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
The groups that have been using the space prior have been notified that the space is available.
Yes. The senior citizen groups.
Train group?
There's several groups, several groups, and the senior citizens are one of them, and they're rescheduling their meetings there now, so. You have Carol Valdez.
So we have no public comment here in the audience, but we, it seems we have one, I think, by Zoom.
We have Carol Valdez. Let me ask her to unmute. Go ahead and unmute, Carol.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yay. You know, I wanted to know if you were looking at any other, or I guess this would be for Keith, if you were looking at any other companies that do the backhoes like Kabuta or Kamatsu, you know, maybe price them at a different company other than Caterpillar?
We are at a great prices. Caterpillar, John Deere, and Case at this time, that go to only ones that offer our government discount, government pricing on the equipment.
And which one, did you say Caterpillar and what?
Caterpillar, Case, and John Deere.
Oh, John Deere, John Deere. Okay. And then also, is the village renting out, like, the senior citizen for, like, parties or baby showers or anything like that?
Do we have anybody come to us and ask? No. Well, we haven't had any come in and ask, but if they do come to us and ask, we are allowing it. We are renting it.
Okay.
Because we're, we're told, we're told in advance whether the school district will be using it or not. So I'll know, you know, by, by the last week of October if they're going to use it in November.
Okay. How much is it to rent that, do you know?
$187.50.
$187.50?
And a $200 security deposit, which you get returned after.
A whole day?
For the day.
Okay. All ready?
Pash.
Oh, because somebody was asking me, and I said, I have no idea. Oh, because somebody was asking me and I said, I have no idea. And then I was also wondering what's happening with the Willbrook property.
They're still waiting for the bonds to close. Their, their SSA bonds have to close.
And is there like a time limit when that's going to be?
Well, right now, they're looking at, I'm told they're looking at October, mid-October.
Okay. Yeah, because I was just down that way yesterday and I seen that nothing was going on yet. So I was wondering. Okay, I think that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Brett. This is trustee Pash. Just on a side note, on the community center rental, we do have to have COVID guidelines on that when we do rent it, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes public comment.
Well, there are no other hands. Did you want me to check to see if anybody?
No.
So if that concludes public comment, there's no need for executive session tonight. I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting. We have a motion by trustee Pash and a second by trustee Moon, or vice versa, whichever gentleman would like. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye. Aye.
No opposed. Meeting adjourned at 7:33.